Okay, so I'm gonna call the combined special meetings of the trustees of the Tulsa Airports Improvement Trust and members of the Tulsa Airport Authority to order for a federal inspection service facility, a work set.
Right, well Frank is getting our consultants, I just wanted to provide an overview of where we are with the project. This is something back in, I want to say twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, customs came to the airport and said that they needed a new facility because their facility on cargo road is woefully inadequate. And so they approached the airport saying you all have to build us a new facility if you want us to stay at in Tulsa. And so at that point, we decided that it just, first off, we didn't have the funding, we had to figure out like what would be our plan, then we had a plan, we worked with Corrigan and with others to come up with a conceptual location of where the FIS would be located. And we looked at all different spots on the airfield, the key is that's changing is today customs goes out to airplanes to do the inspections. And with this new facility, the planes will come to customs. So it'll be a change for our general aviation customers because they'll actually taxi to the customs facility, get out of the plane and come into the building, be cleared and then taxi to their FBO or to their hangar. I've been thinking through the project, a general aviation facility has certain standards and then a federal inspection service facility which supports commercial operations has other standards. And so our team was looking at the means and if we were to do the project separately, then we would have duplicate space that we would be paying for since we have to pay for it. And so we made the decision to combine the projects to eliminate any duplicate spaces. And at the time, we thought the cost was going to be about fifteen million dollars. But a lot has changed in five years and right now we're looking at a total project budget of about twenty or thirty, thirty-four million, and that includes design and everything. And then Senator Enhoff was able to get a congressionally designated spending allocation of five million dollars to support this project. This will come to us through the FAA and the AIP program. We are putting in fifteen and a half million dollars of airport money for this project. And then Frank, through the bill program, the bipartisan infrastructure law that came about up because of COVID is using funds allocated for that to pay for the remaining balance. And it's going to be tight, I mean, our budget is pretty tight, the airlines pre-approved fifteen and a half million in our airline use and lease agreement. If we're, if we end up going over that amount, once we go out to bid for construction and get construction estimates, then we'll have to go back to the airlines and get approval for anything above that amount because all of the Tate funded portion will go into the airline rate base. So the good news is, is that we've been moving forward at a quick pace, I would say recently. And the team is here today to provide an overview of where we're at, how the facility is going to be laid out, where it's located, what are the finishes and what is the experience going to be for our customers? And so I don't know if you want to introduce the. Well, we have our local folks from Sellsor Schaefer and then Corrigan is the national firm. And if you guys want, we, we have the slides, I know you brought some things to show us, the exteriors, but who's going to kick things off?
I will kick things off, I see a quicker on the table. So, good morning, I am John Trippiano with Corrigan Associates. And just a little bit of background, our firm, we are a national firm that specializes in aviation design and airport thermal design. So kind of a good fit for doing an FIS project, this is something that we've done a lot of. I'm gonna walk you through a little bit of what the project is and how passengers will be able to engage with this. And then our partner Sellsor Schaefer will walk you through what the three dimensional design and the aesthetics of the building, materiality and the other components are as well. So as a starter, the, the new GAF and FIS, we, we combined them and you'll probably just hear me refer to it as an FIS from here on out, is going to be located over off to the east side of the existing concourse A. This area is not overly developed, it's a parking lot and some covered parking right now. And this is near the inbound baggage claim, so these are all things that we needed to consider as we were designing this. We do, through the course of this, have to, in order to build it and have the new gate for the international arrivals, we will decommission one of the ground boarding gates over in that corner and replace it with a jet bridge enabled gate instead. So we're going to break this up into two different kind of parts of the discussion. First, we're going to look at just the floor area, so we have, as Alexis presented, the GAF or the GA, which is for the general aviation. Those are the areas that are in this image dedicated in purple, this is where those general aviation passengers will enter the building and be processed. And then in orange, we see these areas that are shared, these are areas that would be required to be with a GAF if we were just building a GAF. Or they're also required to be with an FIS if we're building an FIS. So together, the, the two people can share these things, we don't have to duplicate these efforts, those are all of the spaces in orange. Those tend to be things like restrooms, break areas, locker rooms, and then detention facilities, interview rooms and places where we're going to pass, process passengers that have additional need for screening. And then for the most part, the areas that are in gray in this image are the ones that are dedicated solely to the FIS passengers. These are all commercial aircraft traffic and how we will process those passengers. This is all on the first floor, the GAF is only on the first floor and all the processing for the FIS is also on the first floor. On the second floor, this is going to be for all of your commercial activity. So again, the orange is, is areas that are accessible to both domestic and international passengers. That's pretty much your whole lounge and the toilets and the access corridors for those domestic passengers to do both departures and arrivals, so it's a fully function for those. International though, is the areas that we show in purple, this is primarily for international arrivals. So there are areas up on this level that are only for those international passengers to process downstairs, collect their bags, do their immigration, and then they come back upstairs and I'll walk you through that flow here in a little bit. So let's talk about how does a GAF passenger use this? We've, we're creating a small little GA stand over here to the east side of this facility that is dedicated for the GA aircraft to come to this facility, which is different than what happens today right now. As Alexis explained, the CBP has to go to the aircraft, they have changed their protocols and they no longer support that type of, of process. So we need to be able to bring the aircraft to the facility, those passengers will then take that orange path from their aircraft and enter the GAF. Once inside the GAF, they go through, there's a small little waiting area and then they're directed back to where the agents will process them. Once they're processed, they will, those that are properly processed and are able to enter the country will then turn around and go back out and they will be escorted back to their aircraft. Or if you need additional screening or there's just more questions that the CBP needs to ask you, you'll follow them. This purple line over the three B, which is where they will do more interviews or possibly even detention if there's a reason that they're not going to, cannot provide access to the country at this time. So again, if you go to the area that's labeled three Bs, that is one of those shared areas that the FIS is also using for the exact same function. Pretty simple process for those GA aircraft. For international passengers, as we said, the international passengers starting on the upper level, they follow this arrow from point one down this set of escalators. Once they get down a set of escalators, will move down to the lower image. They're now in the international bag claim, they'll process through, grab their bags, they'll move on through the queue to the primary processing with the CBP. For most passengers, this is the end of your interaction with the CBP. You'll be granted access to the US and you'll follow this orange line back to an escalator that takes you upstairs. If you need additional screening, you have problem with your documents, other concerns, you'll go into the CBP, what we call the secondary, this is where they can search your bags in greater detail or they can have interviews with you. Depending on what happens there, hopefully you're released, which is a minor little issue and you'll rejoin the rest of the passenger flow where you will then head back upstairs. So we're back up on the top image and you are now a cleared passenger and you'll go through and enter the main terminal where your your meters and readers will come and collect you. So this is pretty much the process of how the CBP will function, the areas that we've got allocated for the GAF and the CBP. Before I hand it over to you, I'm ready to talk a little bit more about the next items, are there any questions that people have about how users will use this or the areas that we've developed that are required for the CBP?
Yeah, it just seems like you're going up and down a lot.
It's one of those unfortunate realities of immigration is that we typically do have to bring passengers to multiple levels because it's difficult to put them all on one, one.
Right, right.
And maybe our staff will be answering this, how, how is this different than, I guess I'm trying to figure out what's changed? When you brought general aviation people, these are people that are just not flying in as regular Arizona to Oklahoma general aviation people, right?
Yeah, this is just international.
All of it's international, all of it's international. Prior to this, how is this being handled? There's, there's a little office and.
So they go, they taxi to their FBO, they notify customs and customs comes and meets them at their plane.
Right.
And they clear the passengers and the aircraft, plain side.
So these passengers don't have to stop anywhere else in the US to go through anything, okay, okay.
So on, on the private, this is more if we get an international passenger service, but on, on a private, they're going to go through and then go back out onto the airfield and then go to their.
Back to their FBO, however, however it is that their charter arranged for them to.
Right, right, right. And you, you see, I mean, I know people that fly internationally privately, sometimes they just, you know, Tulsa's a good place to refuel or whatever, they may just stop and check in.
That's exactly right.
And then fly on wherever they're going to go, so.
With, with GA, international GA, I, I think you hit two nails on the head there, that if you're coming from Mexico or further south and you're going someplace north, you oftentimes will have to find a refueling stop.
Right.
So people can make that choice based off of their FBO operators to where they want to refuel and they can go ahead and process through. I think a second aspect that makes a difference to people is what are the wait times, what is the, the traffic at the different GA facility? So if I was going to a market where that I knew they're always backed up, there's four or five aircraft on the apron every time, stopping at Tulsa makes it easier for me to process through and then I can go on and continue on to New York or wherever it is I need to go and not have to deal with it at my end destination, that is another choice that they made.
Okay, the employees and that make up this facility, are they federal employees? And so how are they paid? Through FAA or do we pay them all that way?
So they are federal employees through US Customs, Department of Homeland Security. And we are a, we are not a user fee airport, so we're not having to reimburse them for their time. We just have to provide the copy paper and the printers and the facility for them, so we don't have to pay for their time.
Okay.
Now, airports across the country are starting to do that, especially the busier airports because they want more access to be able to clear more flights. We have four CBP officials onsite in Tulsa today and we think that's adequate, given the volume of service that we're expecting, so. So I mean, we will have initially, my guess is service to Cancun or Cabo or someplace like that, maybe twice a week, maybe four times a week when we get really going, but it's, it's going to be limited at first. And so our current staff is able to handle that.
So when American Airlines lands here, they're using our terminal building through an agreement that they've made, you know, Vance Airlines, Airlines Agreement. I guess I'm trying to figure out who's paying, are they, is anyone paying us anything to come in to use this facility or is that?
So we will be establishing a rate for use of this facility. Today, they do not pay, I mean, customs may charge them a fee, but there's no facility fee tied to that.
That's what I'm looking for.
So yes, we will establish a rate, it'll be in the rates we've been charged us at some point in the future.
What about cargo? We have any international cargo flights that come in and out and would, would they use this facility as well?
They would not, they would not use this physical facility as, as a way of clearing those types of aircraft. But the people that are working in this facility are still the same agents that would be processing those flights.
So they would actually go into the cargo. They're, they're still go onsite or to the plane.
And I think there's, there's something else to be said that this facility or these types of facilities don't just necessarily deal with passengers and aircraft.
Right.
There are other immigration responsibilities that these, these agents have that go beyond just your, your passengers. So there is a front door to the facility, there are ways that people, the general public can go and, and have conversations with the agents. And if people are transporting firearms internationally as an example, they would need to go into this and, and declare those with the CBP in advance, get the proper paperwork filed, these types of things would still occur, they occur in your current building, or their current facility, it would occur here as well.
But you go back to the slide that shows where it's located and proximity to the airfield.
Got a couple of.
Yeah, it's close to all the cargo.
Yeah, it's at the very end of cargo road, like where we, what we call right now is VIP parking. So that is going to be, you can see there's the loading dock that will continue to be accessible for our tenants to use. But they'll just drive it to the very end of cargo road and there will be a parking lot there for the public to park in and access the facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, just one clarity, like the parking lot that we see here in this image, this is only for the CBP employees, they're, they're very, very particular about their security. The public will have to use one of your lots, so they'll have to park them on your garages or use other transportation to get here and walk over to this facility because the CBP will not permit public parking this close to one of their facilities.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No, I'm not here to up and down bother.
Well, you, you have, you have a small foot.
Yeah, I've been through the facility with fires, we used to go hunting in Canada, so that, that was pretty easy to do, you just had to come out and then they have to get everything cleared. Now you can't get as close as we could then, you gotta, I guess you come out, wander through the airport with a rifle case or.
We do have the, the parking facilities right here, so we're able to walk across and there's a few hundred yards to get from.
But my point being, we don't want people coming through the terminal with their shotgun cases or rifle case.
Yeah, they don't have to go through the terminal, they can go through the, through the other routes on that transport.
Okay.
In fact, they cannot get to, from the terminal to the customs area where they would check the, the shotgun or rifle, they cannot get through the terminal to get that. It's an external entry only.
So even if you wanted to from the terminal, you would have to take this gray sidewalk over to where the front doors.
Right.
So no one is literally walking through the terminal to get there.
So probably one of the more convenient parking places would be the, we'll call or the cell phone parking lot.
Yeah, I think we probably need to discuss the parking situation a little bit further to figure out the best location because it is quite a lot. Yeah, I didn't realize that people couldn't park there, so perhaps we, you know, we have the old cargo facility that we're going to be tearing down. So perhaps we put a parking lot there that could be available to the public where they would just.
What, what's the radius that they don't want any, any parking?
It's not necessarily that, that cut and dry is generally there, I think it was one hundred feet was a perfection zone that they were asking us for. So when you think about, and this map doesn't really show in great detail, all of this area generally today is used as parking, not by the public, but as probably employees or workers. When we go out there, we see that there's, there's cars up against these existing facilities and that.
Those are really what we're doing, yeah.
Okay, so we wanted to take one or two or three spaces, I don't think you need much.
Yeah.
It's just a way or there's some options that we could give people within, or if that's an.
Are you saying though that this is not in any real way connected to the terminal? So people who are processed through this, they have to go to the outside, they can't go into the terminal?
For the public, there's no real connection, so I don't have a, well, this has to use this roof plan to, to help us. Right now, this is the corner right here is a, is a public waiting area outside terminal A. If you've been over in here, this is where vending machines and things over here, you know, we're sitting somewhere right about here today. If you look at that corridor, this is the end. So your loved ones can meet you out here. Once you process through this, you'll take this red corridor, which is at the upper level, and you'll re-enter the building right there. And you'll be, you'll, you'll be inside and then you can go follow the same routes as everyone else for ground transportation, et cetera. If you're a domestic passenger though, not an international, if this was a domestic flight that was parked here, you would, you would re-enter this way.
Right.
The same way that you came in and you rejoined all the other passengers and go through the little.
You would already be in the secured area.
You'd be in a secured area.
Well, that was my point is, I didn't necessarily want our international passengers to have to wander outside in the middle of January.
Your passengers won't go walk back into the building and they'll be the same.
Unless you're going hunting in Canada.
Well, if you go hunting in Canada.
You're gonna be cold then.
You're gonna be cold then. You're gonna have a jacket.
Well, well, if, if you are getting ready to go on our, our first Cancun flight, how do you get to this gate? You would go through the terminal building as you do now, you go through the existing security and then head toward concourse A.
Right.
Instead of turning and continuing down concourse A, you will enter this hall as shown and that will take you into the FIS to get on your plane.
Okay, and because, as most people know, in the US, we don't segregate our departing arrival or, or, excuse me, departing international or domestic passengers, so you'll just be a passenger at that point. To something Frank is saying, there's nothing that says that this aircraft has to be an international departure either. So if you had somebody like Delta that just added an international flight to Cancun, they could service that departure from any of their gates. It's just the arrival has to come back to this gate and if they choose not to depart and the timing doesn't work, they can tow it, you know, off and leave it to a different gate later. But it can also work for both international departures and arrivals or domestic departure and arrival, so you have great flexibility there.
Right.
Can we add a gate there if we need to?
Well, there will be a gate there.
Well, I know there's one, but if you.
Oh, multiple gates.
In the future, there is the potential that we can continue to add gates around this building if we add a second floor over here. So it is designed to accommodate, this part is two stories, this part is one story, we can build a second story, we can add more gates. It requires the demolition of the dock and part of this, this warehouse for cargo building over here. So it's envisioned that that could happen, but your, your traffic would have to justify the additional need for those, I think we did two more gates on there.
So what, I mean, what's the capacity of one gate? It's trying to be way, way, way down.
Fifteen flights today.
It's if they start at five AM, which several of the carriers do, and just depending on how many turns they can do. I'm thinking Southwest.
I would, I would.
Eight to ten.
Yeah.
If you're just back to back to back to back.
We have a lot of capacity in the terminal, especially with the common use system implementation. And so we have several gates that can be used. But it is nice, I mean, American, Delka, Allegiant, who are all on that concourse today, it's very convenient if they have irregular operations in Dallas and they needed a plane. And, and many, not many, sometimes those are international flights.
Right.
And today, when we have an international flight, we can let them out in the concourse, but we have to segregate those passengers from every other passenger in the building. And it gets a little complicated.
And if the crew times out.
Yeah.
The passengers get stuck now, they'd be able to actually be processed through and get a hotel and.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Get this back to Britten Leesons.
There you go, I think with the up, down, up, down, two things, one, it happens, it's about everywhere.
Yeah.
And two, if you think about it, if you're getting off a seven thirty-seven, the jet bridge coming off is not going to be ramped down. It's gotta be up.
Yeah.
So you're gonna start up and then just based on our space, it's, it's normal to see the up downs, just about everywhere.
Yeah. I have one more slide that I forgot. And, and I think we already talked about this, but this is the domestic passenger arrival. And this shows that the domestic passenger is just going back to where we were looking at before, they'll, they'll re-enter the secure part of the terminal. This arrow can go both ways, this is also how the message passenger will depart, but they will just go through and then they'll have access to the FIS.
All right, so this portion of the presentation, I'm going to put a little bit more about the look, appeal and tangible things, the guest experience, passenger experience and kind of the history of working with this team, what the expectations were, what the goals were. We talked about Tulsa, Tulsa centric, what, what, you know, how can we celebrate Tulsa and we got into the story? Also just future minded, forward thinking, and what's being done. And also calming experience, everybody knows that typically in an airport environment, it can be hectic, it can be crazy. So how can we do things here, even when it comes to selecting finishes and choosing the right colors, materialities and patterns to just create a welcoming, pleasant environment? Very early on, this diagram is pointing to where we wanted to identify key locations for artwork and really artwork in the sense of maybe large wall graphics that are either very Tulsa centric, we're telling a story, maybe aviation themed and we're working with an internal graphic artist and this team to design that. So these were some really important places that we wanted to identify early on, a big part of the story and kind of informed the overall palette for the remainder of the space. Our interior finish palette, and I do have physical samples on whether I can lay out if you guys would like. Um, very clean, very calming, but we wanted to also have this little nod to art deco. Tulsa obviously has a very strong history with art deco and initially when we talked about that, Alexis was like, I like it, but let's not be too literal with that. And so we took that and kind of abstracted it a bit and thought about patterns and angles and some of that vocabulary that we could use as a jumping off point for how we, and how that informs this palette. So we have, and you'll see this, we've got some really lovely interior rendering, so you'll see kind of how this applies into the building. But we have included a sort of champagne gold finish in a phenolic wall panel that you'll see here. And, and that was one of our ways to become a little less sterile and a little bit more warm and inviting and kind of unexpected. We've got terrazzo finishes obviously on our floors throughout. Carpet at the gate areas are really unique, ceiling panel that we're using at the gate lounge area and again at baggage claim and you'll see that in renderings as well. And then just really durability, that was a huge topic, we have to, you know, it can be beautiful, but it has to perform and it can't be something that's going to be a headache moving forward, corner guards, wall base, all of those very, you know, tangible things that people are going to constantly come in contact with. We want to make sure we're treating those appropriately and not leaving anything to chance. So here is a view as you're coming into the gate lounge, so off to the left here is that carpeted gate lounge area. So you've got kind of a lower volume ceiling there and with some nice modern linear light applications. And then that main thoroughfare there where you've got the kind of subtle angular terrazzo pattern, the volume pops up and you've got a lot of nice borrowed light coming in through the clear story up there. On the right hand side, that's that champagne gold Trespa panel, so it's a phenolic panel, very durable, attaches to the wall on a Z clip system, so in the event something ever were damaged and it's unlikely that it would be, it's, it's an easy, easy to be replaced item. And the inset to the restrooms. And the inset to the restrooms, um, we've got, uh, kind of a playful, uh, the porcelain tile panel minimizing route joints. That was, that was big. We talked about that. Um, so that's just an area where we, um, define those entries a little bit, make it, making it very clear for guests and passengers to know, um, areas that they're welcomed to use and go into versus something that say if you enter a mechanical closet or something like that. Um, also I'll mention here, we're we're starting to look at what the furniture layout might look like in the gate lounge. Of course, we'll have the traditional, you know, tandem seating that you see in airports, but, um, even like leaning into what Coroghan's been seeing with airport trends and some of the different things that are happening with how people want to sit and relax and plug in and connect and kind of gather a family around a table or lounge event. And so we're looking at ways to integrate that into what might be the more traditional gate lounge furniture experience. This is down at baggage claim, um, also taking that same kind of unique perforated metal, uh, ceiling panel and lighting system and using that down here. Um, just a little bit of an architectural opportunity to, um, play out the baggage claim device, um, repeating that uh, volley, that, uh, shape in the ceiling detail there. Um, this terrazzo pattern takes you out and you'll see the, um, processing area down there at the end of the stanchions. And then that would be kind of your last stop before you head back and out and up. Um, also repeating, um, the phenolic panels down here. All of our surfaces are covered either in a phenolic panel or a porcelain tile. Um, we don't have any, um, exposed painted surfaces. This is still in the baggage claim, just kind of returning or looking at that phenolic panel wall with that little ceiling detail. Uh, just again, architecture is kind of communicating movement in this space and and queuing people up to know processing is down at the end before you exit the baggage claim. Then I'm gonna let Tyler and John talk about the history.
All right, so luckily this facility is positioned on the approach drive, um, to the airport. Um, and so what we did at that was we created a new signage piece for for all vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic too, coming from other parts of us. We wanted to really embrace that opportunity. And so what you see is this, uh, panel on the entire facade with an integral signage, TUL, um, and then also Tulsa International Airport. Uh, listed there, it's a, um, aluminum, um, sorry, it's an aluminum, uh, rain screen panel. It's on the southwest face, so it's gonna take a lot of that solar heat gain from, um, the sun and keep it away from the inside of the building so that our mechanical systems don't have to work as hard. Um, the other, uh, pieces of this building, you know, we have pre-casts, we have metal and we have glass, matching most of the existing, not exactly. The different metal is aluminum, we have steel here, but those are the basic kits, kind of parts that we use to to create kind of a signature entry to the to the, uh, building. Once we come up through processing, you're downstairs, you have no way of seeing the exterior, seeing if it's daylight or not. What we wanted to do is right at that point, the artwork is right at the end of the escalator. We also wanted to create a a peek-a-boo window, if you will, that allows you to see, oh, it's raining, oh, um, it's daylight right now, to give you that first touch of Tulsa if you've never been here, if this is your first time. Um, another thing that this, uh, metal panel facade does is it is articulated in such a way to also give nod to that that art deco kind of Chevron pattern, if you will. Um, it also gives the panel itself a lot of rigidity for wind loading. And then the the really exciting part for me is that we are going to backlight the facade with some RGBW lighting that can change and and be set differently, um, to really make this facade pop as you 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 drive to it. And so it it's twofold. We have backlight within this cavity. We also have the, uh, letters being lit from the outside, from the front, so that they stand off against that. Um, during the day, you obviously won't be able to see the light, but the cavity inside will help these letters stand off. Um, at night, the. At night, you can see what.
Yeah, and so to kind of capture all of that, I mean, this is a one-off, uh, facade custom for this building that John has worked tirelessly developing, um, and so we've worked with lighting engineers, we've worked with metal fabricators, uh, to provide a new uh, system for this facility that will be, uh, you know, really the new front door for the airport will really help, uh, give it a fresh approach as you're coming down the departure and arrival drive and have a huge impact that many of the airports is in.
Yeah, I think the exterior piece to me is really exciting. You know, we talk a lot about how the canopy changed the exterior of the airport, and we've really embraced that, um, even with the new addition connecting the garage to the airport. But this is going to freshen the front door to the airport unlike anything really I feel that we've done in over twenty years. And so very excited about the lighting. It it's, you can see in there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's gonna be lit from the bottom and the top, um, which gives us the ability to, you know, change the shading. Um, you you can put some movement to it if you want. We're not gonna do anything crazy because we want calm, you know. Um, but you'll be able to see this, I believe, from the highway, and I just think it's gonna give a great impression.
Great, so, um, just initial thought. We've gone through huge amount of time and effort on a new logo a few years ago, getting our consistency of signage where it looks good. We just talked about a mock-up of our entry monument. Um, and this doesn't seem to fit with all those things.
Well, so we talked about the logo and we we did not want to marry ourselves to the logo for decades to come.
Right.
So this has our three-letter identifier, which will be the same. It's very, um, simple in terms of the the lettering and the the entry monument, I think, is that touch point for the airport brand, which lets you know you're arrived at the airport. Um, we can use colors to represent or reflect the airport brand colors if we want. But we were, we had the discussion about whether or not we wanted the logo somehow represented on this. And we ultimately decided we didn't feel like that would be a good long-term decision.
Correct. And is, do you all have anything that, um, puts this piece with the exterior of the rest of the terminal so that it doesn't look like an add-on?
You mean the terminal building going on where it's past that bridge?
Right.
Yeah. I don't believe we do other than just that that piece there.
Yeah, it, um, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I, it looks good. I, it just, I've I've done a few remodels and seen a few remodels and what you wanted is to be new, but to blend and not stick out like.
Lean to.
This is. This this isn't add-on.
So we've told, we've had some internal discussions about the li, I think it's limestone on the exterior of the building. Um, and prior to this project, actually, you know, we've been talking about how we we can change the impression, I mean, that that architectural style of the building is set. We took down the gold sun shades that were there, which helped, I think, bring a more modern feel. I think longer term, um, it it is something we need to think about and and whether, how we change the external feel of the building. Uh, maybe moving away from the limestone so much, um, and towards something more like this.
Well, and and, yeah, and and that that, I mean, you, you may wanna update.
Yeah.
The rest of the terminal. Anyway, uh, I'm glad you're having those discussions.
Typically on departure level.
Yeah.
You're gonna pass this and then you're gonna hit departure level. Arrival, we at least have a canopy that's modernized it, departures is still a little bit.
Right.
We definitely took some time to talk about that. On the interior, if you notice, it looks nothing like the existing, the terrazzo's different color, the walls, the ceilings. And the thought was, we're not gonna make this new building conform to the old building. We're gonna make this new building conform to what it's going to be for the next twenty years or thirty years.
Right.
And as we need to update the existing building, we will take the aspects of this building and spread it into the new, into the old building. So we will pull that in. As far as the the exterior, we may, and we did have a talk about getting rid of the green rock. We may put some other material on the outside of the building that looks or appears like this, but there are some aspects of the existing building that I don't think we will ever get rid of or want to. And that is all of the exposed steel. That shows the history of TUL, of this building. And personally, I wouldn't like to get rid of it, but that that's a personal opinion.
Yeah.
So you are right, this is not gonna look like the old building. The old building eventually will look like the new building.
Okay.
Well, and the old terminal building actually received some international awards for design.
Absolutely.
I'm thinking Herb Fritz and the folks that did that, did that design and I, and it's just become, for Tulsa anyway. Tulsa, right, yeah. I have a logistics question. You guys might already figured this out, but the bag screening, the actual screening, is that done in our existing bag string and then they come right?
As you enter the building to go to Mexico, you will go through the same process that you do right now.
Right.
The bags are gonna be screened the same way, whether they're going to international or domestic, jump in here from the wall.
Absolutely correct.
And then you will meet your bag in Mexico as you get off the plane. Uh, so it will be no difference. The only time you're gonna see a difference is when you come in from Mexico, enter this building, and then you will pick your bags up lower level, take them to customs, and they'll say everything looks good. And then you will enter the building, come through the, uh, exit lane as it is right now. You won't have to go to the checkpoint or a bag claim area because you already have your bag.
Right.
And you just walk on out.
Okay, so like a lot of other airports that are international, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotch, questions?
Yeah, probably most of it.
Yeah, I I mean, I, I like it.
Yeah, I I like it. I I was intrigued by your comment that the screen will produce some energy, they will consider that was sort of pioneered by Bill Kelly here in town, their building.
The only thing I would, one thing that I like how the building has the windows with the setback for Tulsa International. If we're gonna see it from the highway and we're at entryway, we just need to make sure that Tulsa International is kicked over far enough to the left so you can see it when you round the corner. So you might model that a little bit on the driveway.
Yeah, it's a little close there.
Yeah, well, and it's.
Pretty close.
I like what Alexis said, you could see it from the highway. Um, I think that's cool. You just need to make sure you can see it from there too.
To be able to read the TUL, not the smaller.
Yeah, huh, yeah.
We keep cutting down trees, you might be able to see it very clearly.
I gotta knock down some more.
Don't take.
All right, any other comments or whatever?
Uh, there's one question about, um, we talked about the budget at the very beginning, so, you know, and more money and are we, have we done a real aggressive value engineering program? Because when we get the contractor involved and we're gonna get our pricing in, you know, we just need to be prepared. Um, I'm just wondering, you know, on the VE side, how aggressive we are.
Who wants to take that one?
Um, yeah, so we've been engaged with a cost consultant throughout the process, remember they've been checking in with the price um, throughout, so we've been working with the airport, uh, bringing as much of their attention as possible. So we've been really trying to keep things as lean as possible while maintaining their needs as a facility. So, um, anywhere we need redundancy, we are certainly wanting to to, uh, to provide that. But in areas where that's not required, we've looked at all those areas and really, um, you know, to really dial this thing in um, so that we don't have to provide anything superfluous. And I think throughout the process, we've talked about it several times and, uh, discussed, you know, there's really not much uh, to this building that we can take off without totally changing the the code or anything.
Your cost consultant is the one that's managing the value engineering component?
Um, they are just a cost consultant. I would, I would describe it more as value design, only just where we're at right now.
Right.
Is, uh, they they're cutting that into like, just a a perspective on this, these CBP facilities tend to be a little bit pricey just because there's a lot of security elements. There's a lot of things that you guys don't get to see that are in here, you know, ballistic rated walls and and bullet resistance and things that just add cost that, uh, that no one will ever get to see. The amount of access control, security, cameras, those types of things are where the main cost drivers will end up on the project, and they're not necessarily things that we can value engineer out. Uh, because they, we've got the minimum requirements that we have to meet from the the DHS and the CBP on that. But our our consultants, the one that we've been using, the Tyler was speaking of, this is what they do. They they do this for airports around the country. So we've got a lot of faith in the numbers that they've been producing and we've been working with them to make sure that we're staying as close as we can to those targets.
Question two as far as related to both customer experience and revenue opportunities, did I miss something or is it just not, um, something that would be necessary? Is that, is there gonna be food, beverage, retail, anything on that?
So at this point, we do not have, we have an area that could be converted into it, but we have not created a concession. And generally, that's because without having a prescribed flight schedule for this area,
Right.
it would be very hard for someone to be profitable if there are only, let's say, four terms or two terms a day.
Right.
You know, no one, no one else is gonna go back into this corner to buy something unless they're actively flying out of those gates.
But you do have the opportunity.
We we have vending located there now, and we have a way to convert that in the future. It doesn't mean that you couldn't negotiate something with one of your current vendors and say, hey, when there are flights, can you send a person over and we can open up a little kiosk uh, to provide these services for them. If this expands and you have a full route of traffic in there all day, definitely there is space available to to create a concession that could be viable and can earn profit for that concession.
This is a long-term sort of question. This looks really wonderful as a pristine white. But as our safe song says, the wind does come sweeping down the plains and it carries a lot of dust and dirt and pollen. Or have you, what's the maintenance on these? And you you have to spray and wash them every so often or?
So, uh, good, good question. Yes, we have thought about it. The interior of the cavity is spaced, so the backup wall is stucco and it's gonna be a smooth stucco. And it's also gonna be painted a very light gray just so the light can bounce in there, which is gonna try to not show all that dirt. Uh, but the cavity is spaced so that window washer, there's a few, uh, areas where we have, um, curtain wall going up behind the panel so that you can still see through, not just at the peek-a-boo window as you're walking out. Yes, you have to wash it. Um, yes, it's easy to clean and easy to maintain and durable. Um, but just where we live, it'll have to be washed.
Yeah, yeah. Kinda like the white building and go over and.
Yeah.
We've Oklahoma City and the wind blew and it's pink now. Luckily, we're not in Oklahoma City. We don't.
They should all change. You don't have place oil like that.
If I could address the design question or we do have to follow the standards from the Customs Board.
Right.
There was a situation, if you remember the drawing, it showed the end of this building and how close it was to the receiving, uh, dock. Um, customer was saying, oh, you need to have a blast wall there to separate. You have to have twenty feet, thirty feet. Set forty feet. They were asking for forty feet and we are so far from that. It's not, we're about half that distance. And they're saying that a truck could pull into that dock loaded with a bomb and go boom, and you take out all our people. And the cost of that wall, and it's just a wall, would be. And the cost of that wall, and it's just a wall, would be astronomical to. Sustain that blast and protect the building, and we. Justin discussed a little bit and finally came to a conclusion that we are not gonna put that wall in there, we're gonna fortify. This wall to some extent to uh. To absorb or deflect that blast.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was difficult for them to identify what size blast we're we're supposed to fortify against. And if you know anything about blast analysis, you could have a ten pound bomb or you could have a forty pound bomb. And it's not. Lineal, that forty pound bomb is gonna do more than four times the damage of a ten pound bomb. Also depending on where it is in proximity to run, so. We cut out an expense there by saying, we're not gonna have a second wall, we're gonna fortify this wall, what will that cost? And there was savings there.
Okay.
So next steps, design, we're continuing with design.
Yes, ma'am, we're pro, we're ninety percent.
We're uh issuing our our drawings tomorrow, uh, uh, for permit, so that will be coming.
So we're at a hundred percent, we'll go to permitting, we will uh. Start advertising.
Uh, we're looking right now, we're finalizing the dates, but we're looking kind of in the July time range.
That's what I was saying, in July, August, so we may have an award in September. For our construction contract.
That's quick.
We've been working on it for a while.
Yeah.
So I I just felt it was important for you guys to see where we're at, see what we're planning, get your feedback. I've written down about five questions that we're gonna, uh, that follow up with the team on. And uh, we'll be coming to you before we know it, ready to move forward with next steps, so. So thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much. So no action needs to be taken.